This time, I'd like to call to order the Hamilton County Council, January 2nd, 2019. Madam Auditor, if you'd please do a roll call.
Uh, yes, Fred Glenn.
Present.
Ken Alexander.
Present.
Brad Beaver.
Here.
Steve Schwartz.
Here.
Rick McKinnney.
Here.
Amy Masalomani.
Present.
Jeff Hornet.
Here.
Mr. President, you have four.
Thank you, Madam Auditor. This time, if you all rise for the invocation from Mr. Councilman Rick McKinnney.
Be here, be here, bough our heads, please. Great having Father, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, represent our fellow citizens, and help us to have discernment and wisdom in making decisions tonight and throughout the rest of the year.
Amen. This time, Eric Turner, if you'd please come up and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Eli.
Eli, I'm sorry, Eli Turner. Thank you for being here today. He's a Boy Scout locally. If you'll please lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, if everyone's had a chance to read, I would accept a motion to approve the amendments of the regular meeting on 12/5/2018.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm abstaining.
You don't want to go, think you can go back in time or something?
This time, item number five is we're here to elect a new president for the Hamilton County Council for 2019.
I would like to nominate Brad Beaver.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. This time, I will retire as your current president and switch with President Beaver.
Peaceful transfer of power. That's what's great about America right there.
There's been no, there's been no coup.
Just so you know, your name tags.
Yes, we got the cheaters on it.
Thank you, Council.
Thanks, Steve. Next, we'll go to the election for Vice President. We'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for Rick McKinnney.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Rick McKinnney is the new Vice President. All right, at this point in the meeting, we will have public comments. Anybody who's not on the agenda would like to speak to the Council, now's the time. See nobody rising, we'll go on. Committee reports. Mr. President, pass. Do you have any comments?
Uh, none. I do, would like to share with the Council, I did take a tour of the Community Corrections Dining Hall. It is about eighty percent complete. They still have to do a little bit more concrete work and just a few small adjustments. I would say they're probably at least eighty-five to ninety-five percent complete, and they should be up and running, I would assume, by the end of January, first of February. That's all I have.
Rick, you're the new Vice President. Do you have any comment?
Um, only thing I have was I had the opportunity in December to ride with one of our deputies on a night shift, and again, just reaffirm how excellent and professional the staff of the Sheriff's Department is. And I think the county's in safe hands twenty-four hours a day.
Thanks for coming out, we appreciate it.
Great, thanks, Rick. All right, let's go on to the committee reports. Highway Committee.
We did not meet.
Finance had no meeting.
We did meet, and we will hear more about it later in the agenda.
Okay. Anybody have anything under miscellaneous?
I do. Regarding, I know that there has been kind of back and forth discussion regarding our library board appointments that we made for 2019.
Library?
I mean, I'm sorry, tourism. And I just want to affirm that our appointments are good through December 31st of 2019, from what I've gathered, and they meet the criteria. Is that the understanding of?
Is that the understanding, Council? Council Leader?
So we need to take no action?
From my understanding, I don't believe so.
Now, are you aware, Council, that there is some discussion going on with the Commissioners at their December 10th meeting? Okay, and you're referring not to the Commissioners, but the legislation from the state?
On both, there's a state statute to deal with. I don't see, their ordinance doesn't contain any new definitions.
Okay, I'm fine with it. I think that's great.
Okay, anybody else? Let's move to unfinished business.
Welcome our new sheriff and our newest Council member.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Our newest Council member, welcome to Ken Alexander, our newest County Council member. Welcome.
Congrats.
Congrats.
And our newly elected Sheriff, this is his first meeting sitting at the County Council meeting, Dennis Quackenbush. Or is it Quakenbush?
Quakenbush, yeah.
Quakenbush.
Mr. President, for an armed man, does he look a little nervous to you right now?
Well, you have to understand that I went to high school with the Sheriff's Dad.
Oh, okay.
And in those days, it was Quackenbush, or at least he didn't correct us. But I'll try to remember, it's Quakenbush.
I won't correct you either.
Okay, all right. All right, let's keep moving. I see no unfinished business, I see no tabled business. Let's go to new business, and the first thing we have in new business is a visit from Deana Furchman? From Trinity Free Clinic.
Thank you. So, Mr. Beaver told me that I only have three to five minutes, so please strap on your seatbelts because I have a lot to tell you, okay? So, my name is Deana Furchman, and I am the Director of the Trinity Free Clinic, and we provide free medical and dental care to the low-income workers of our county. So I'm not going to go through all details because you have everything on this presentation that I gave you, but bottom line, the people that we take care of, the largest percentage of the folks that we take care of are the low-income workers of our county. If you turn to your, to the next slide, it'll show you basically what are the types of jobs that our, that our patients take. And eighteen percent, for example, are food service, and janitorial, and construction, and landscaping. So you see are the laborers, the workers in our county, those are the folks that we serve. And the reason that they fall through the cracks is because the people that are working and make over thirty-six thousand dollars a year for a family of four, they don't qualify for HIP or for Medicaid. The folks that do qualify for that, we kind of steer them in that direction. The folks that are working and just barely making ends in meat, they are the ones that we serve because they cannot afford their employer-provided insurance. Or if they do have that insurance, they often cannot provide the deductibles, they can't cover them. So, for example, did you know that we take care of all of the janitors of our schools and the cafeteria workers, for example? Those are some of the folks that we take care of. They are offered a health plan. I had a janitor tell me once that his health plan is five hundred dollars a month just for him. Well, that's like a major part of his paycheck, he can't afford it. That's, that's who we take care of. The next slide shows you all of our specialty clinics and all the visits that we provided last year. And we are able to do all of this for free because we are very good at begging, and we get a lot of partnerships from everybody in the community. We have three hundred and seventy-seven active volunteers that provide all of the care, and we are very good at getting partners. For example, the IU School of Dentistry, they send us their staff and students, their faculty and students, to take care of our patients. And the Marion University School of Osteopathy. And now, new partners, we have, right now, we have Butler and Cedarville Universities that provide our pharmacy interns, and now Purdue is doing the same in Manchester. So, new partners that are interested in our, will become our partners in 2019 is the IU School of Dental Assisting and now the IU School of Medicine. So I'm just so happy about having all of those people come and work at our clinic, which, by the way, is a really nice big facility with six operating, operatories dental and six exam rooms. So you probably wonder, how do we pay for all that? So, the next slide shows you, our budget basically is divided into two, almost two exact pieces. One is our cash budget, and then the other one is our in-kind budget. And this slide will show you where our money comes from. So, all of the government entities put together, mayors, all the mayors, all the trustees, yourselves, the Council, provide about twenty-five percent of all of our cash, twenty-five percent. That includes the fifteen thousand that you granted us. And then the in-kind budget, there you go, you can see where all that comes from. So, how can the county help? I believe that we are very good for the county because we are taking care of the people that are really the backbone of our county, they're the ones that are doing all the work. And when, it is expensive for them when they're sick because they, it is expensive for their businesses, but it is also bad because they end up in the emergency rooms, and that is not good for the community. So the first thing I would like to ask is, I'd like to invite you to one of our Lunch and Learn events, and they happen the fourth, the last Thursday of every month, and I've already, some of you have already attended a Lunch and Learn. And this is a strictly one-hour event. You come, you eat lunch while you hear about the clinic, you get a tour, and you're out. It's just to give you information. And now, the reason that I'd like you to learn more about the clinic is because I would like to ask you to help me get all of these employers involved in, in helping us. In the last two years, we have taken care of the employees of over a thousand businesses, okay? So, you'll see in your packet, I have attached the list of those businesses. And the idea is we want to educate the workforce on all the services that we can provide at the clinic so that I can see someone when they have a small cavity as opposed to after they've tried to take out their own tooth, because we've seen that quite a few times, okay? And much rather see someone that has hypertension before they end up in the emergency room with a heart attack. And we've already partnered with a couple of companies like Joe the Butcher and Hiddle Landscaping, who is now providing all the landscaping for the clinic. So, that is all I have, and look at that, exactly five minutes. So, if anything that you could do to help us promote our work and get all these employers involved, at least you, thank you.
Okay, so you want us to take a look at this list of employers, and I see Hamilton County is on there, and try to induce them to contribute to Trinity Free Clinic.
I think that the best thing to do is before asking someone for funding, is to provide them a benefit. So what we have done with these other companies, for example, Joe the Butcher, we attended their employee meeting, we explained the work that we do, we put them in touch, we, we brought with us a patient navigator, who's bilingual too, who can try to get them, people registered for whatever plan they might qualify for. And then, Joe the Butcher says, this is great, how about you let me provide the lunches for your board meetings? Like that, so.
I got it.
Let me show them, let me, let us show our value first, and then we'll worry about who contributes what. However, having said that, if every single one of those businesses provided six hundred dollars a year, it would cover our entire operations for a year.
I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deana.
Anything else?
You said Hamilton County's on here, who from Hamilton County?
So that could be, that could be the person that cleans over here, for example, that's very likely.
That would have to be a part-time employee, wouldn't it?
Well, I would, when I went over there, when I went and had the walkthrough, I will say that that was the first thing that jumped out at me was, was the, the companies, and this is a real opportunity for businesses that are looking to locate here, run their business, and that their low-income people can afford to actually go, because they can afford their co-pays, they can afford that. And just getting that knowledge that this resource exists can lead to that philanthropic gift that you're looking for, but just being able to be out in front of them, and I think you do a wonderful job over there.
Thank you.
Thanks, Deana.
Thanks, Deana.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, under new business, let's go to approval of vendor claims. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Under new business C, we'll go with ordinance twelve dash ten dash eighteen A and ordinance amending the Hamilton County Code.
This is just, this, yeah.
What is it?
FYI.
Information only? Okay, we've been informed that there's a new ordinance. At this ti, uh, at this time, we're going to open the public hearing concerning additional appropriations out of the general fund. The first is a one forty-four amendment from the County Assessor. County Assessor here, I don't see her. We need a motion.
Looks like, so moved.
Second.
Is this discussed in personnel as a favorable recommendation for revised job descriptions? Is that what this is in regards to, Steve?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Is it new money from the County General?
No, it's just job descriptions.
Job description only?
Yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. The next will be a transfer for the Commissioners.
So moved.
Second.
Thirty thousand dollars, nine hundred and eighty-two. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Commissioner, one forty-four amendment.
So moved. Second.
Okay, looking at this, what? Okay, is it an increase in salary, or is it related to the last?
That's the thirteen.
Yeah.
That's the transfer?
Um...
No? Okay. Any discussion on the one forty-four amendments?
I'm just trying to get clarification here.
Where we have two or three choices, right, on the dollar amounts? I'm looking at Steve.
Personnel, kick in here.
Yep, I'm trying to remember exactly what we did here.
Because we have, like, two choices, for example, one on the deputy as an increase possible of thirty-eight seventy-seven or twenty-five thousand three eighteen.
Okay.
I think if we were going for a lower amount.
There's ones a deputy inspector waits to measure, the other ones in training position, so it's a junior person, the way I read it. Yeah, that's what we're looking at here.
Right, that's for the replacement.
So, yeah, and the job requirement, one went from associates to a bachelor's with more experience, so it's...
Okay, so the, the one is an increase of thirty-eight hundred dollars, and the other one is an increase of twenty-five thousand dollars.
And that's, that second one's the twenty-five thousand where they, they increased the qualifications, looks like.
But he's supposed to be retiring, I think it's for three months, they would have the extra money, so. He retires, yeah, in March. He's kind of, there's a gap overlap of training for the new person coming on. And the new person coming on is actually taking a decrease in salary from the county.
From, from the county?
He's moving from one department to this department.
And taking a decrease.
And taking a decrease.
Okay, I was just looking at, it said twenty-five thousand a year, and then there's this, currently it requires associate's degree in business or applied science, now it requires a bachelor's degree in business administration with four to six years previous experience.
That's for a guy in...
Fully changed the job requirement, that's what I was thinking.
That's a guy in, uh, waits and measures?
Yeah, yeah, and it just looks, I was just wondering if that's why they're increasing the salary by twenty-five thousand per year.
Line item has to increase based on the classification, although there's only three months of that, so it really won't increase to that degree? It will not increase to that. Correct, right. Assuming a whole year. Correct, so it's kind of pro-rated in theory.
Yeah, I see that, but I, why would they want to take the decrease, just out of curiosity? Any, any reason for that? Just, just for the heck of it?
From what?
Do they really want that job?
Yeah, they really wanted that job.
They're ready to move.
Ready to move?
Yep.
Any more discussion? Does that, both of these have a favorable recommendation from personnel? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The next one is coroner job description update.
Yes. So, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
What, what is the long and short of this job description update?
His job description has changed.
Basically, and long and short is, years ago, decades ago, you had funeral home directors running the job, and then this was kind of a, was kind of an easy form of traffic for them, for their business. So, they were doing a lot of things, but they were able to charge for it for being a funeral home director. Now, we have somebody that's not a funeral home director, they're still doing a lot of that job. The salary increase never went up with it, and so we're looking to just try to get him to the bottom, the lowest elected leader position, or pay scale for Hamilton County.
Okay.
The pay change won't happen until 2020.
Twenty twenty.
What's the pay, what's the difference in pay again?
Well, there's no, we'll decide that in September. Yeah, you'll decide that in September.
Okay, okay.
Okay, and so the coroner still has the authority to arrest the sheriff, that's correct.
That is correct.
The only person that can do that.
Yes.
In the county.
Any more discussion on the coroner job description? We have, already have a motion? We have a motion in the second round. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Court Administration, one forty-four amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Steve, you got any thoughts on this?
I'm fine.
Do you want to give us the short version?
Yeah. No.
Okay. Rick, do you want to give us the short version?
Just a reclassification.
That's all.
Will it cost us more money in the end?
Eventually, probably.
Per year?
Nine hundred and twenty-nine?
Thirty-nine twenty-nine.
Okay.
Thirty-nine twenty-nine.
Okay. We have a motion in second, all in favor of the Court Administration, one forty-four amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes, oh, here's one. The Sheriff, one forty-four amendments.
So moved.
Second.
Got any discussion on that?
I think it's pretty clear-cut.
I guess that's part of his honeymoon, uh, endowment there, isn't it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Okay, on to B, the Airport Capital Fund request, a hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty. This is an additional appropriation. Mr. Cozas here, this comes out of the Airport's Capital Fund.
Actually, this is a grant.
Oh, it's a grant?
It's grant money, so it's coming out of the grant.
Okay.
I make the motion to approve. Second.
Have I got any questions, it's for Mr. Cozas?
Nope.
It's not general fund money. All in favor?
There was like eight of us, so really there's only.
We'll call it Fred. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Did you guys see? I don't think I sent it to all County Council members, I sent it to the website lady. Air Force Two was here last month.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah, it's like a, what is it, a Gulfstream brand, Gulfstream business jet brought the Vice President in for a funeral, and it landed and stayed a few hours at our airport. Okay? You can't really, it does have the, the blue and white with the gold trim on it, so you can tell it's a official, official airplane. All right, moving on, Communications one forty-four amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
This is just a quick run, there's a lot of these today, so I'm just trying to, you know, figure out.
Yeah, that's it.
I mean, Mr. Snowden is here, and this will be his last official meeting, so should we allow him the opportunity to explain?
Mr. Snowden, come on up and explain these one forty-four amendments from the last time.
He's like, I thought I would never have to deal with these guys again.
It's my understanding that these amendments are actually just changes in job descriptions that were requested by HR.
Is that all you got?
I have more, but I wanted to let you know first.
Does anybody have any questions from Mr. Snowden?
I have none.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thanks for your service to our county, Mike.
You're doing a great job.
Sorry to see you go.
Thank you very much, I would like to take this opportunity to thank all of you for your support over the last five and a half years, it's been a lot of fun here, so.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good luck in your new venture.
Okay, D is Highway Special one forty-four amendments.
So moved.
Second.
Who knows about that, anybody?
Same, just new jobs, job descriptions. Description.
And the money will come later?
And we'll forget why, and?
Any more discussion here on this one forty-four amendment? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? That passes. E is a Comprehensive Opioid Abuse Grant Appropriation.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Are you, are, never mind.
Are you in discussion?
Yeah, it looks like it's just, it's just grant money, right, Madam Auditor?
Comprehensive efforts to identify.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that was E. Okay. FHWA reimbursement grant fund appropriation.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. The next two, Westfield QRT Program Grant Application, and the one after that, Carmel QRT Program Grant Application. These two, I think, is, if the QRT is Quick Response Training, these are opioid-related grant applications. And I just want to say, before we vote on this, Todd Clevenger, the grant administrator, who's the new guy in the Auditor's Department, I always call a new guy in the back, he's down there with Kim Roush and Cindy. Anyway, he was instrumental in getting these grants. So, in six months, he's doing part of his job, I just wanted to give a shout out to Todd for that work. So let's take Westfield and Carmel QRT Program Grant Application.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No.
I'll make a motion to approve. I think.
Second.
The amount's the same, but we had to split them up into two different line items. So on ninety-one twelve, we had forty-eight thousand seven fifty going into professional services, and twelve hundred and fifty going into interーン training. And then on ninety-one seventeen, we had forty-eight thousand seven fifty again going into professional services, and twelve hundred and fifty going into community service.
Part of your motion?
Yes, I'll accept that.
And my second as well.
Any more discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Nutrition Breakfast Program Grant Application.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. And J is Nutrition Lunch Program, this is lunch, not breakfast, this is Lunch Program Application.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Okay. We're down to announcements, Sheriff, do you? I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
It's just a test. Always do.
It's just a test.
We're going to close the public hearing for additional appropriations. Sheriff, do you have any announcements you'd like to make?
I just want to let you guys know that the jail expansion project is still on target for a March completion.
March completion?
Yes. Other than that, I do not have anything.
Thank you. Counsel Attorney, do you have any announcements? Okay, would you see me after the meeting, I got a couple of things I want to discuss with you. Auditor, do you have any announcements?
I do.
Okay. Buckle down.
The first, first thing I have, Dawn has your contact information, so if you would please look this over, and then she would like highlight it in green, the number that you want for public.
Highlighted in green? Okay?
And then, the last thing I have, the past few years, we have ratified transfers that we've had to do for year-end, that people neglected to get to us on time. So I'm asking for a motion to cover, on the last page of your agenda, we've got two, three, four, five departments that need their transfers ratified.
That would be Clerk, Commissioner, Sheriff, Chume Cap Development and Communications. Is that correct?
I'd make the motion to approve. Second.
We've got a motion, second, does anybody have discussion on these year-end ratifications? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there anything else for the good of the nation?
Uh, yeah, I have one.
Okay. I was just asking the auditor.
Oh, okay.
County Council members, we'll start with Councilor Hearn.
Eli, could you come up to the podium again? Just like you to announce what grade you're in, what school, and what you're, what you're here for, besides being thoroughly entertained.
My name's Eli, I'm sixth grade. Sixth grade, and I am here doing Communications Merit Badge.
What school do you go to?
Westfield Intermediate School.
Nice job, well, thanks for coming.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Um, I was going to suggest or offer myself and Brad as the two council people that Brenda had requested for the Destination Development, since you'd already talked about being on for the Building Committee.
That's another, how many meetings? Okay, that's fine.
Just a couple more.
Okay. You remind me, okay?
So.
Is that okay with everybody?
It's okay.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Are you okay?
I suppose.
Do you have anything else, Rick?
That's it.
Amy?
I, I have nothing, I'm, I'm good.
Steve Swartz?
I'm fine, thank you.
Ken Alexander?
I'm good.
Fred Glenn?
Nah.
Anybody have anything else to bring forward? Meeting's closed.